Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the MyHingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. It is 6 o'clock on July 15, 2025. I note for the record that this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with matching under law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting this evening? Seeing that I note for the record attending tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Liz Klein, Board Member, and Julie Straley, Board Member. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance for those who are willing and able. Please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Before I move to our next agenda item, I just want to note that I got some sad news this afternoon from the Fire Department. I regret to inform the public that Chuck Bacon, who was an EMT firefighter with the department, recently passed away. Firefighter Bacon was appointed as a sub-call firefighter on January 1, 1977, appointed as a permanent member on July 2, 1979. He retired in May 2014 after 35 years with the Hingham Fire Department. He was promoted to Assistant Mechanic on September 8, 1980, promoted to Master Mechanic on October 22, 1997. He was a member of Group 2 for his entire career, most of his career. While Chuck was a member of the department, he did whatever was needed to get the job done. Chuck received many letters of thanks for his performance while on duty, for emergency calls, and for his work to better the department. He would help out anyone that needed help, going above and beyond without hesitation. He also served as a president of the Hingham Permanent Firefighter Association for many years, always planning events from Fireman Sunday to the retirees dinner, firefighter ball, and the muscular dystrophy fundraising drive, always looking out for the best interests and images of the association. I did know firefighter Bacon, and I want to note he was a wonderful guy, and our thoughts tonight are with the Bacon family and with the Hingham Fire Department. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I think we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. Are you ready to proceed, Liz?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
All right. With that, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 18, 2025. Second.
All those voted by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Abstain.
An aye and an aye, the motion carries by majority. Next item?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated May 19, 2025. Second.
All those voted by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
An aye and an aye, as well, the motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with CHA Consulting Incorporated for the engineer services, design, and permitting for the new Carlson Field pickleball courts. We have with us Vicky Donlin, Mark Thorell, and David Sequer. But I'm going to turn this over to Julie, as Julie's going to take point on this item for the board. So Julie, thank you for doing that, and turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to set the table that tonight before us, we're simply approving the contract to hire an engineering firm to design and move the pickleball project through the permitting process. And I want to thank the evaluation group who did the careful work to select the firm to do this design and permitting process. CHA Consulting has been a reliable partner with the town on past projects. They have extensive experience throughout the Northeast in court projects, including pickleball projects, and the Select Board looks forward to working with them. I'm the Select Board liaison to Recreation and therefore will follow this project and check in regularly. Per the annual Town Meeting 2025 recommended motion for the pickleball project, that the sums would be expended by the Town of Hingham Recreation Commission with the approval of the Select Board for the design, permitting, bidding, demolition, site preparation, construction, and all other related expenses for the new pickleball courts. So annual Town Meeting approved this project, and the town will go forward with the process to design and ultimately construct the pickleball courts. But the town heard the voters at annual Town Meeting who have concerns about the project. So I have expectations that we will have public meetings throughout the design and permitting process. And to that end, once CHA gets started, the town will hold a public meeting, meet the design engineers. So at the very start of the design process, the residents are heard, which I know is part of the contract from CHA. There should be multiple design options to see what works best on the site, including the number of courts and configuration. This project at the beginning is not guaranteed 12 courts. Honoring the commitment to high-quality 15-foot fencing and sound mitigation screens around these courts, that the local boards permitting process, including Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, will cover all aspects of the design of this project within all zoning laws, rules of operation, with public input, and that the project will be mindful of finances and spend its budget wisely. And finally, I want to add just a couple of notes because we've heard some feedback still recently about this project. I want to point out that approximately 25% of the project cost estimate is to demolish and clean up a condemned building, an eyesore and a danger in the midst of a corridor of gathering and recreation. This is not a pristine site, and it's clean up, and the new use is very positive for our town. Tennis courts are not pickleball courts. The nets are not correct. So a reminder that anyone who observes that there isn't a crush of pickleball players out there playing on tennis courts is because they are not pickleball courts. Hingham residents are going to other towns to play, and they're facing increasing pressure from towns restricting use to their own residents. And I think the Town of Hingham should in turn give its playing priority on our own pickleball courts to our own residents. And the funds for this project were voted by Annual Town Meeting 2025. They cannot be repurposed for paying for school staff or for better water. The Weir River Water System has its own capital funding, and it's very important ongoing work is planned and funded for improving the water system. And the Board of Water Commissioners just met in the last hour, and there was an excellent presentation, very informative about the water system and its ongoing work. So I recommend that you watch the recording when it becomes available on Harbor Media. And I'll just note that excellence in education and providing safe, clean water are among the highest priorities here in Hingham, and we are very much focused on that. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark, Vicky, David. Who wants to lead there? Mark?
Sure. Sure. The Hingham Rec Department has hired and successfully completed several projects with CHA. The Cronin Basketball Court, the Cronin Street Hockey Rink, the Community Playground, the Accessible Pathway Project, and the Pickleball Location Feasibility Study are all examples of completed projects designed by CHA. CHA has a tremendous amount of experience working with municipalities, and they have designed many post-tension concrete sport courts. They have been extremely responsive, responsive and flexible in making sure that the town's needs have been met no matter what curveball any given project may have. CHA's firm has an entire team dedicated just to the rec field. Their team consists of engineers, architects, landscape architects, and sports turf specialists. We have always been impressed with CHA's highly qualified professional staff members, and because of that, we do recommend to the Select Board to consider hiring CHA as the pickleball court project designer.
Thank you. Vicky, you want anything?
I guess the only thing I would add is that it was a very competitive proposal, and CHA has been working with us for a long time. We had no idea of the proposal they were going to put forward with the amount of work they have done in pickleball courts throughout, basically, the United States. Their references were stellar. So when Mark talks about the work that CHA has done with Hingham, the amount of work they have done with other towns and states, I reached out to Nantucket, to Maine, to many pickleball courts and towns in Massachusetts. Their work is stellar, and most important, their response. We get a response within 24 hours every time we call CHA. So I just wanted to say their proposal just sways us beyond what we have done with them so far. So we're pleased that we can recommend them to the Select Board and to the town.
Thank you very much. David, do you have any additional comments about the proposal?
Just as far as timeline and process, you know, so this is a request, you know, for a proposal. We had a site visit that we went out to, and at that time, we had four potential candidates. They had options to submit questions, which we received, and then we did answer them in a timely manner. And then ultimately, during the deadline, we received three contractors, obviously CHA being one of them. Our Mark, Vicky, and Matthew, who is our Assistant Town Engineer, was part of this group. So we thank him for his technical expertise on this part when it came to the post-tension courts. The evaluation criteria quickly were five categories. It was the responsiveness and the submission of the requirements, their municipal experience, similar project experience, you know, basketball court versus a pickleball courts, two very different things, their professional qualifications, and the quality of references, which Vicky had mentioned. So ultimately, the technical proposals are ranked first, and then, once it was a unanimous decision by the group, CHA was number one, then we unseal the price proposal, and that's when we also saw that they were the lowest as well. So that's great. And then after this, once approved, all the technical proposals are available for public record, you know, so if anybody would like to see the others as well, we will have that available to the public.
Great. David, thank you for your hard work on it. Mark and Vicky as well. Julie, do you have any additional questions?
No.
Liz, any questions?
Excellent. Well, thank you, and thank you, Julie, for taking the lead on this. Just curious, I know you mentioned the evaluation group. Did the Rec Commission also review or vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
At our last meeting, which was last Tuesday.
Okay.
I apologize.
July 8?
Yes. Yes, July 8. Okay, perfect. Can you just explain the timeline and the term? I'm assuming this takes us through, obviously, design and permitting all the way to construction? Is that why it's August 12?
That's correct. That was part of the schedule with the technical response that they put in and kind of what we were forecasting of what this project would be as far as closing out and hopefully a grand opening, ribbon cutting.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any question or comments about this agenda item? Ms. Tucko, name and address, please.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Tucko. I'm at 22 Hillside Terrace here in lovely Hingham. First, I want to thank you all for your time and your services. It's so nice to see you, and I hope the summer's been treating you all very well. So I'm here again voicing my opinion and concern regarding this process, the abutters and the neighbor involvement in how this project is being run. I have attended all the Rec Commission meetings, the RFP bid construction site visit, followed up, followed the RFP on open.gov, and I'm still left perplexed on how an informed decision is being made on these pickleball courts without serious discussions. Honestly, when it comes to this pickleball project, I don't want to be met with hostility from the Rec Commission, especially when I ask questions pertaining to this project, how educated decisions are made, and how it is going to affect my livelihood. It's intimidating to attend these meetings, not feeling like I have a handle on the subject or being an expert on the subject, and I know that you are. I'm well within my right to ask questions in public meetings and deserve respect. My concerns and my neighbors' concerns are valid and should be treated as such. I clearly wrote this before listening to you.
No problem.
The Rec Commission is an elected body that serves the community, and I am an active and very respectful community member. This project is still lacking transparency. The focus seems to only get 12 courts into this space. No one is focusing on the sound and protecting the neighbors, Bear Cove Park included. The final bids were sealed, and I am unable to see those bids, and thank you, I believe now I can see them. The Rec Commission posted their July 8 agenda on the town website July 1 at 11:38 a.m. with no pickleball discussion on the agenda. I checked the Rec Commission agenda daily until the morning of July 8. No changes. Until 4:43 Tuesday, July 8, 1 hour and 47 minutes before the meeting's start time at 6:30. The change made discussion and possible vote, discussion and possible vote of recommendation for pickleball project designer. The Rec Commission voted to recommend CHA as the project designer with zero discussion or presentation. It's unclear how the Rec Commission members, who were not involved with evaluating the bids, were making an informed vote considering the decision to recommend CHA was made Monday, July 7. When asked to hear more details about how the evaluators came to that decision, I was told that it wasn't the time to discuss details, and it was being voted on, and the Chair was talking to the Commission only, even though the agenda item was discussion and possible vote of recommendation for pickleball project designer. So CHA does have a great, they're a great firm. These were the questions that I had. The firm that reported to the town on this feasibility study in May of 2024 on pages 13 and 16 of the two Carlson Field sites, quote, "No noise concerns, would not need buffer areas and noise barriers." Fast forward to January 2025, the Hingham Ascentex Sound Study concluded quite the opposite. Page 6, "The new pickleball courts will be auditable at all evaluated receivers, some receivers as far as 1,200 feet away." And I apologize that I have to bring up a lawsuit, but it's happening out there. And the latest one was in June of 2025, the Town of Berwin, PA and their local YMCA. They're being sued by four neighboring houses, 500 feet and 1,000 feet away. Only six pickleball courts. Distance alone is not going to reduce the sound pickleball makes. At the site visit, it was a little painful to listen to the CHA representative confirm the already existing certified pool behind the Traces Building. Wasn't that supposed to be in the feasibility study? I found the certified Vernal Pool on the state's GIS tool with ease, and the town paid CHA to research and provide an accurate report on it, and it was not included in the feasibility study. So I ask, show me how and why CHA is the best for this project compared to the other In CHA's final cost estimate from March 10, 2025, instead of adding the 10% soft costs and 15% contingency costs to the already existing $2 million budget, CHA pulled a total of $426,000 from the budget, the already existing $2 million budget, and created three more line items: contingency cost, soft cost, and total estimate probable cost. To my understanding, contingency costs are not baked into already existing line items. Contingency costs are an additional amount of money of a project's initial budget to account for unforeseen circumstances and risks. You're in procurement, you probably know that way better than I do. And I can be corrected.
Hillary, you have about one minute left.
Thank you. CHA removed $32,000 from sound fencing, leaving only $108,000 for hard materials for sound fencing, and they removed almost $100,000 from the demolition of a 12,000-square-foot building. CHA also got the 12,000-square-foot building, or the building information incorrect. I believe it's an 18,000 to 20,000-square-foot building to be demolished. So how can the cost of a demolition for a larger building cost less? I touched base with a former Hanover Town Planner, and he recently demolished a FUDS building, and he said it cost close to $1 million. Understood that those are different apples and oranges. So Select Board's members, this is your land, and this project continues to move forward without transparency or oversight. Over the spring and into the summer, I frequently visited the PRS Courts and the Cronin Field Courts. In the timeframe between April and June, I saw pickleball players on five occasions at the PRS Courts. There's a couple that I saw playing on three courts, or one court, three times, and a group of maybe eight men that played twice. At the Cronin Courts, I was at the fields twice on Saturdays and saw zero pickleball players. You know what I saw? A lot of tennis players. The rec numbers for pickleball for the spring for adult lessons was 30, and for the children, it was only 16. For the kids, for tennis, there were 176, which are great numbers. We were all at the Town Meeting, and this project was voted on after 11:00 p.m. at night and won by a very slim margin. Of the roughly 19,000 registered voters in town, only 1.2% voted in favor of these courts. You promised oversight of this project specifically to sound. When do you step in, and how can the neighbors work together with the Rec Commission and the Select Board to ensure neighbors are protected and this project is installed correctly? Thank you very much, and I apologize if I went over.
It's okay. Appreciate your comments. So I guess a couple of things. Julie spoke to a lot of your concerns, I think. Okay. All right. So I think she did, in terms of our limited role and oversight role. I mean, do you want to elaborate on CHA at all? Or I know she asked about quality.
I know in terms of the budget CHA presented, the contingency originally was baked into the total overall cost. I believe we were asked by the Select Board to itemize it out, and so that's why it was itemized out for the final cost estimate. But in terms of our recommendation, we're comfortable with recommending CHA and have four different projects that have been successful and been happy with their performance throughout the projects.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Judy, come on up.
Hello.
Name and address. They won't hear you if you talk from there. I know it's North Street.
Judy Sneethe, 89 North Street. Thank you all. I'm just wondering, to my neighbors' concern, how will the public be involved in the design? And I understand it's a done deal, it's happening, but how will the public be involved so that we have some sense of whether there's, yeah, the possibility of influencing the sound and the magnitude of the project?
Well, the Rec's going to have public meetings. I mean, we have a limited, very limited role here, as Julie talked about, but we'll be involved as well, so we'll have public meetings as well. So I think it'll be the public meeting process, we'll solicit feedback, obviously people can comment as well. Anything else you think, or think that's?
Well, we're going to have the opening meeting with the designer, and so that we can, you know, talk to CHA, residents can talk to CHA, you can share your concerns, you can, you know, and I, as I said in my opening remarks, I expect the sound mitigation that was promised as part of the article. So, but like I said, I'll be the liaison following this process, and there will be also the public hearing process with three permitting boards. It's Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there will be ample opportunity for people to find out what's going on, but also give input. But what CHA first has to do, and after they meet with the public, they're going to start coming up with the designs, and they will, they'll come back and report back what their ideas are. So that would also be a public meeting.
Go ahead, Ms. Wetzel.
I have found that I'm spending a large amount of my retirement time watching Hingham Town Hall's action. That wasn't exactly what I was planning on doing, but I find I spend more and more time on Zoom and more and more time attending public meetings for the very reason that Hillary was so kind to explain to us. Things get on agendas, they're not posted according to the open meeting law, and they are changed at the last minute. I am tired of that as a resident of the Town of Hingham. I have begun to feel that there is a group working within our town hall that is not supporting the residents, particularly the long-term residents in this town, who have lived in the town long enough to know how the town was run well. So my concern, having heard what Hillary said, is this is outrageous, and that I don't know who oversees those agendas and when they are posted, but they should be accurate. And when they're not accurate, then someone needs to react, and it's going to be the public. And I guess I'll just attend more meetings and remind people we do have open meeting laws and that the agendas should be correct. So I am registering a complaint with the town that the open meeting law that was not corrected for this particular issue. Thank you.
I see Clark Frazier's hand up is online. Clark, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Yes. Clark Frazier, 50 Bodybriar Circle. I have a question about the scope of this contract. Will the contractor be coming up with estimated budget and maintenance costs, so the operation costs? How much will this, once they're built, cost to maintain and keep in good condition? I noticed a nearby property just removed their tennis ball courts and could have been used for pickleball because they couldn't maintain it. Well, just is it the scope, or how is that going to be done? How much is it going to cost each year once it's operating?
Mark, can I take that one?
Sure. So the design of the courts will be post-tension concrete, which will last for several decades. Really, the only maintenance involved will be the surface, the painting of the surface layer, and that's something that the Rec Commission can do as part of its normal operating budget funded by the town, the Recreation Department revolving fund.
So you're saying that after 20 years, the courts have to be rebuilt?
No, I'm saying that it'll much, it'll last much longer than 20 years. Post-tension concrete are known to last 40, 50, 60 years and beyond.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. With that, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Claw Harbor and Associates LLP for the engineer services, design, and permitting for the new Carlson Field pickleball courts in an amount not to exceed $166,000.
Second.
All those voted by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye, as well, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Palmeroy Associates LLC for the owner's project manager, OPM Services, for the South Shore Country Club pool complex. We have Kevin Whalen joining us, and David, if you don't mind staying up here a little longer. Actually, it's going to be a little while tonight. It's going to be your meeting here. All right. Kevin, tell us about the good development here.
All right. I'm here for the Select Board to consider the agreement between Palmeroy Associates and the town to be our project manager, services at South Shore Country Club for the pool. This is a previous agreement that we had, but it expired due to the delay in construction of the pool. There were several benchmarks that have already been met by services that Palmeroy had provided for the maintenance building, the design and construction of the maintenance building, and then also for the schematic design and all the way through the permitting process. So that has already been done. The only thing left in the contract that needed to be done or completed was the construction, and the reason obviously was because of the delay. The former agreement that we had with Palmeroy has expired, so therefore, we have to create a new contract with Palmeroy Associates. It's for in the amount of $160,235, and the contract would run to the end of June 2026 through the construction phase of the pool.
Excellent. David, anything to add?
Just to add that we, the solicitation for the invitation of bid hit the street on July 9. Tomorrow is the site visit, and we anticipate a contract approval for end of August, August 26, if everything goes well.
We, without the... We, with that, the bids have been out for, it's been advertised, as he said, since a week ago, and we've had 30 contractors, general contractors have, you know, pulled They've done is through this whole process for both the maintenance building and the pool so far.
Well, I just wanted to say how thrilled I think we all are that this is moving forward. And thank you for your continued commitment to it, Kevin. I think we're all just very happy that this is where we're at and moving forward at this point. This is great. So with that, Julie, do you have any questions?
No, just echo that we're happy to come to this day.
Liz?
Thank you for your patience and persistence. And just to, I think you said this, Kevin, but just so people understand that this is a required step to have a contracted OPM to be able to move forward.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Oh, we have someone online. All right. Is it Joanna? Go ahead. Name an address, please.
Yeah, this is Jerry Seelin, 166 Hershey Street.
Hey, Jerry.
I'm just curious, this is the first we have heard about the pool project going forward. Could you give us just a few minutes of details on what the status is and what the design is and if all of the delays have now been dealt with, please?
So, you know, Jerry, I'm going to, I spoke with our council this afternoon about it, and what he relayed to me, what I want to tell people, is that we are on track to resolve the pool litigation within the next 30 days. So we anticipate that it will be completed within the next 30 days. Council doesn't want to really get into details of litigation at this point, but when it's all wrapped up, we can give you more details there. I would tell you, in terms of the design and scope, it's what, at this point, it's really what town meeting authorized, in terms of the money allocated and the design, is where we're at right now. So with that, I'll talk to you more in about a month.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else? Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
I know it's Hershey Street. Tell me the number.
Very nice. Ted Matthews, 102 Hershey Street.
I'm just curious what the process was to pick the OPM for this pool project.
So the process, we put out bids or requests for an RFQ process back in 2020. So it was five years ago that we chose Palmeroy to be the project manager for the maintenance building and the pool project. So it was quite some time ago that we went through that process, and we had several different, you know, contractors or project managers, and we chose Palmeroy at that time to be the OPM for both the maintenance building and the pool.
So we chose this Palmeroy five years ago, and they built the maintenance facility.
Right. And they also shepherd the schematic design and the design of the pool, that whole process with meetings with the designer. We chose RMD as the designer, and they shepherd us through that process as well, through the RFQ process to pick the designer. So all that, they've worked for the town now for five years or almost five years, and they've also worked well with the designer in the past as well, which is RMD.
Okay. You know, I commend you for your efforts, but I'm just wondering if they're operating within the confines of whatever that bid was at this point, or are we talking about change orders or, you know, what are we talking about?
This contract does include, like, the rates are, you know, their hourly rates have basically are increased due to, obviously, a five-year delay in, you know, since the last time that we did the contract.
Okay, so have those rates changed, or do they increase annually?
So no. So the rates for this contract would stay stable throughout the contract.
Okay. Yeah. I don't know where to go further than that, you know. Maybe should have gone.
Do you want to go back over the mic?
I'm sorry. When you get a delay like this in a project, especially if it has stopped, you might consider going back out to bid for this type of thing because prices obviously have gone up since.
Right. And I did review it with J.R. Frye, the town engineer as well. We looked at it and found that it was competitive to what the rates are for OPM services.
Okay, current.
Current.
OPM services. Okay, thank you.
Ted, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Palmeroy Associates LLC for the owner's project manager, OPM Services, for the South Shore Country Club Pool Complex in an amount not to exceed $160,235.
Second.
Although in favor, real call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an as well, the motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kevin.
I just have one more request as water commission is. Could you stop praying for rain at about three inches? We had about seven inches of rain shot us down for a couple of days last week, but our crew did a great job, and we're able to.
We just talked about water for about an hour, man.
I know, exactly. We had plenty of it last Friday, that's for sure.
We missed a good conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Adorama for DJI Matrix Model Drones to be used by the Public Safety Department, specifically the Police Department. So we have Police Chief Jones with us. Here he is. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing great. If you could tell us a little bit about your request, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. So our original drone program was funded from a economic development grant, which got our program up and running. We're looking to obtain some more drones so that we can issue them to the individual officers that are on the drone unit because it's critical to have them able to respond directly to the scene with their equipment rather than having to go from the residence back to the station, then out to the scene. These drones are used for, mainly for search and rescue, for scene security, event security, things like that, as well as tracking suspects that have fled. They've been used a number of times. They've been very successful in their operations out there. And like I said, just looking to be able to expand the unit a little bit and have our officers able to respond more quickly and more appropriately to a scene directly.
David, what can you add to that?
Just to add quickly, this purchase is through the Equalis Group Cooperative Serving Agency. Essentially, you just have to register the town. Usually, the police, fire, emergency response can register through this. With that alone, we were able to save around 10% on these specific model drones, which can get rather pricey. So, and the contract is through October 31st, although we do anticipate to receive them much sooner than that. It's just, it's more of a customs kind of question, as long as they can get into the country.
Excellent. All right. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have trained officers on how to use these drones, right? I think you may have created a drone unit. Is that accurate?
That's correct, and they're all FAA certified drone pilots. They took extensive training in piloting the drones, and they all are certified drone pilots through the FAA.
And how many officers are assigned to that?
I believe there's a total of nine right now. We had a little movement in the unit, so I don't know the exact number, but it should be right around nine, nine officers total.
And I did receive a concern from a resident about whether the drones would be used for monitoring. Can you just lay out again the purposes of the drones would be used for in your operations?
Yeah, of course. So it's scene and event security, you know, large events such as the Fourth of July, Christmas in the Square, town meetings, things like that, where we can have them up and able to survey the scene, where everyone is in gathering, make sure everyone's safe, and they're used for search and rescue operations, they're used for mapping, they've been used on fire scenes, they were at the, most recently, up at the South Shore Sports Complex up there where they had that fire. But it's things like that that they're used for.
Chief, thank you very much. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, David. Just to confirm, the funding for this is coming out of the capital budget?
That's correct, yes.
Great, so that's already been approved, right, for 26 capital. Okay, thank you.
Julie, any questions?
Just a quick question, Chief, about the drones. Are we using drones as the animal control officer, ever are you deploying drones, or is that a future plan if people have lost a pet?
Uh, she, yeah, she, the animal control officer is not trained as a drone pilot. If she ever did need the services, our officers would be able to come out and operate the drone and help her if she had a specific area that she wanted searched.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Adorama Camera Incorporated for the DJI Matrix Model Drones to be used by the Police Department in an amount not to exceed $78,353.95.
Second.
Although in favor, real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an as well, the motion carries. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote for awarding and signing the agreement for the owner's project manager, OPM Services, for the new Center for Active Living Building. Tom Carey, come on up. Your option. You've earned it. You've had a lot of services as a town. You can go every light.
As you know, we have already hired an architect who's working on the feasibility and design for the potential senior center slash council on active living at Bearco Park. He's proceeding, and we'll be in front of you, I believe, next week. The architects will be fortunately going to be joining you by Zoom from Cape Cod and to bring you up to date on the, how the design is going along. And we had a meeting earlier tonight at which the committee was reviewing that. So all of that will be forthcoming next week. The order of business tonight is, of course, we're getting to the stage where we want an owner's project manager overseeing what's going on, and we want to get one hired for overseeing construction, assuming that the, a successful article passes town meeting to proceed with the project. We're not assuming that would be the case, we're hiring him, because at this stage, an owner's project manager overseeing the work of the architects is not a bad idea. Someone with experience, a fresh set of eyes. So we put out, or the town put out through the town administrator's office, and David, the OPM Services request for new Center for Active Living Building, a request for submissions. We got 14, which I'm told is a pretty hefty response for one of these projects. We had a committee, subcommittee of the building committee, along with the town administrator, and David reviewed all of these, and we thinned it down to four that we felt were the best candidates, and spent a wonderful entire afternoon from noon to 5:00, learning a lot about the OPM business and how competitive it is as you listen to all of their pitches. And of the four, there was unanimous support for PCA 360. It's a smaller size firm, and it, our P, is that the right one, David?
P3 Incorporated.
P3. We PCA and we're P3, Ps. The P3 is professional something, something, each with a P. In any event, we know the fellow we are recommending, even if I get the name wrong. The presentation was very strong. The, and surprisingly, we had gone through a couple of presentations with larger firms, and this group came in and said, hey, we're the small guys. We're not even sure why we're here, because Hangum always hires the big guys, which is not really true. But it was a forceful presentation. The principal of the firm lives in Norwell, so we're not worried about somebody having to come up from Rhode Island if we've got any urgent questions. They're extremely experienced. They have been involved with some of the most, both, they've been involved long-term, and some of the best recent ones, involvement with Rockland, involvement with Marshfield, involvement with Wilmette, all excellent senior centers. And they have a long history of experience in government work, in the Massachusetts bidding system, and are anxious for the job. So we thought that of the four finalists, P3 was the best, and we've, and that was unanimous, Tom, David, and I. And it was not only unanimous, but it was unanimous sort of right from the get-go. It was very effective. So we think they'll do a terrific job for the town. They have had experience with our architect, so there's not going to be a stranger, you know, who are you sticking your nose in kind of thing. They were involved in one of the most successful projects. I know the architect respects them, and so we think they'll work well together. The building committee itself met at 5:00, reviewed, received our report, and has unanimously recommended that the Board of Selectmen enter into a contract for services with P3. And it's, the request for bids that went out sort of had a two-step process. It wanted a number for the work up to the point of the construction contract having been let, and then a fee for the latter part. I don't know whether Tom Mayo wants to negotiate that right up front or what have you, but either way, it would be our expectation, assuming that their performance is good on the first stage, to keep the same OPM who's fully knowledgeable about what the design is and what the building is supposed to be onboard to oversee the construction as well. So that's the building committee's recommendation.
Tom, thank you very much. David, anything to add to Tom's?
Yeah, briefly. So the request for qualification is slightly different than the request for proposal. This one is through the selection process with nine categories. It's similar experience, Massachusetts Public Instruction Projects, working knowledge of Mass General Law, Chapter 149, the permitting process here in town, managerial stability of the firm, ability to meet the project commitments, so our commitment of this, the qualifications of the personnel, geographical proximity of the project, which is very important, and the quality of references. So with that being said, as Tom had mentioned, it was a unanimous decision to move forward with P3 Incorporated shortly after Tom had negotiated a fee as the chief procurement officer part of that process to award P3. And as mentioned, this is for Phase 2, of which is just for the planning, the designing, and bidding. And this term of the contract was April 30th through 2026 to bring us through annual town meeting of 2026, so pending town meeting. And so ultimately, the recommendation to Tom and for tonight is for a P3 Incorporated.
Thank you. And I would just echo what Tom said earlier. We are going to meet next Tuesday night. Believe it's going to be at 6:30 to discuss the current design plan for the center. So everybody should come, give us your input, give us your thoughts. It's an opportunity to introduce it to the public and to get feedback on it. So that's going to be next Tuesday night. All right, Julie, any questions?
I think, David, you answered my question about that this is just to contract for Phase 2, right?
Yes.
And so then, pending the vote at annual town meeting 26, then would you go back out to bid everyone, or you'd have the option of just continuing on with the P3?
Yeah, it would be a mutual on both P3 Incorporated and ourselves, generally speaking. You know, we you know, we'd like to move forward with it. As, as Tom Carey had mentioned, it's, they already have the working knowledge of the project, and, you know, we have the motivation to keep going with them, negotiate for Phase Three, and keep moving with the project, similar how, how we did with EDM as well.
Okay, so the dollar amount represents just Phase Two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Well, related to that, how does this cost compare to what the estimated budget was for the OPM for Fees Two?
I assume we were within whatever our budget was. I, I left the bargaining over the price to our town administrator. He's quite proficient at that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think he was confident it was in budget.
Okay, and the funding source?
He wouldn't have gone above it, but I'm.
Is the Center for Active Living Building project budget?
Yes.
Great.
Great. Any members in the public have any questions or comments? Come on up. Amy, come on up. Actually, Tom, one, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Give Amy the mic. If you don't mind, just to name an address. We all know you are, but go ahead. Tom, don't go far. You might have to answer the questions.
Amy Farrell, 95 Central Street. And I know that the request right now is just for the first phase for the OPM, but I'm curious about the design itself and the opportunity for public input to influence the size, scale, and honestly, cost of this, and when is the best time and most appropriate time for effective input? And I'm not sure.
Well, next Tuesday. I mean, we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday to introduce it and to get that kind of feedback. And then we're going to probably have another meeting in August, have a couple of meetings. But the first one's going to be next Tuesday night.
So, is it fair to say that there is no commitment to a 28,000 square foot?
Nope. We are going to just open up feedback and take every feedback in and develop a course of action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. Judy, come on back up.
Judy, Sneed 89 North Street. As a follow-up to that question, our capital outlay list is very long, as we all know. At what, like, if I were to put an addition on my house, I would first look at my bank account to see how much I have, and then decide how big the addition should be. I feel like we've, and rightfully so, assessed the needs of the seniors in town and decided that 28,000 square feet would give the seniors in our town the best possible facility. At what point does what we have in the bank come into play here? I know we can all sit here and say, oh, I don't like 28, I like 20, or this town has that. But when do we get to see by how much our taxes are going up, 3.5%, 3.5%, 3.5% plus $99 million in capital, before we make the decision on this particular project? Because when I look at that list of capital, most of it is for buildings we already own that we need to maintain. And so, this feels discretionary to some degree, particularly since we thought we were going to be using this existing building. And I'm really concerned that there's, that there, that these are all silo decisions, and there's no whole look for the taxpayers to say, oh, gosh, we can't afford 28,000, or whatever. Maybe we can. I don't know. But I don't feel like we're, we're getting that whole picture. So, yes, next Tuesday night, we can talk about the Center for Active Living. We can talk about the pool. But when do we get to talk about the whole thing?
Yeah, so, and that's a good, Tom, you want to take that, or? So, yeah, it's a good point. So, I mean, in terms of what the, the tax impact of what the building would be in terms of the debt exclusion and the possibility of fund balance, I think that's going to be a part and parcel of this conversation throughout the year. In terms of the overall capital project, I think we're going to probably have a, like a town forum in the fall to talk about all the capital projects, kind of lay them out. But that's just a preliminary thought of my point. But you want to add to that?
I think you've, you've addressed it. The, the way the process is going to go is the way it always does. It, the building committee will be meeting on a regular basis. Our meetings are open to the public. We're going to be showing a draft. I wouldn't call this project a discretionary matter at all, given the fact that the senior center's inadequacy and insufficiency has been demonstrated for over a decade, and that the seniors have sat patiently by while we built the public safety and while we built another new school. And it's town meetings' decision whether they think that the project is worth it and how it should be spent. As far as when will we know what the cost is and the size of the building, we've been looking very carefully. My committee has been studying for several years what the programmatic needs for the senior citizens in Hingham presently and as forecast. And we aren't making the forecast. The state is making the forecasts as to what our population sizes look like. And we have one of the largest percentages of people who would qualify as senior citizens as a proportion of the population on the South Shore, and it's forecast to go up. We're not trying to design a Taj Mahal. We're trying to design a functional, workable building that will meet the programmatic needs that have been identified and substantiated. We're going to do that by sharpening our pencils, looking very carefully at how the thing could operate and what amount of space is actually needed. We didn't start out with a number in mind of 28,000. 28,000 happened to be the square footage of the schematic design the architect came up with. We're working on that. So, once we have gotten further into the design process, we'll be able to say whether what we're recommending is 28,000, 30, 25, I don't know. You've got to watch out with square footage as the end thing. I mean, if you drop from, if you take 10% off of any construction project, it does not equate to the price of the project goes down 10% because you still need all the basic materials for the building, and that's where most of the expense is. We will be, we hired an OPM with the capacity to make estimates, and we are working on a schedule, if we can make it, no guarantees, that would enable us to go to the 26th town meeting with a bid in hand, so that we would be knowing what number we're going to be talking about. And of course, then you look at the tax issues and how much it's going to impact the, the budget. Capital projects like this one, which I did a few years ago, are spread out. It'll be bonded. The, it's not as though, my father used to tell me that he voted in favor of the proposition to limit the amount of tax rises because they had just built the school in 65 or 67, and they just paid for it in cash. So, the $1 million showed up. Whatever the number of million dollars are, they're going to show up as a price to be spread out over a 20 or 30-year bond, so that all of those who get the benefit of the building will end up in getting some benefit from it. We're a little bit, in some respects, you, you can say it's a limited thing like public safety, but you can't really, because seniors and how they do in the community and all of the services that are routinely provided nowadays with a good senior center rebound to the benefit of everybody. Those who've got parents who are seniors, children who are working with their parents. And so, I think it's a very essential project, and we plan to bring it in at a reasonable cost. Thanks.
Tom, thank you. And Julie, to your other point about, I'm sorry, Judy, to your other point about capital. The board has committed to developing a capital plan this year. In fact, Julie is graciously offered to take points. So, I think some of the concerns you've raised about where are we with capital, and where, where are we going to choose to spend on capital is going to be done through a plan this year. Do you want to add anything to that? I know that was one of your big goals that we talked about.
Yeah, I mean, well, we have a five-year capital plan, as you know, and we are, we've heard the capital outlay committee and others, advisory committee's been talking about it for years, is expanding it out more to 10 years. But first, you have to wrap your arms around the facilities in the town, and what is inside these buildings, and what it's used for, and the systems that would need to be replaced and when, and that data would feed into blowing out the capital plan from five years out to 10. So, we're just getting started on that. It's going to be a lot of gathering data across from all the town departments, and it's going to be a big job. But I think it's worth getting our hands on that data and wrapping our arms around what, what we need to do for the town and take care of what we have.
Thank you for that. I do see a resident with a hand up online. If you could unmute my kids. Is it Hillary? All right, Hillary, go ahead. If you could state name and address, please.
My name is Hillary Hosmer. I live at Linden Ponds, 204 Linden Ponds Way, Unit 422. I just want to comment about costs. I've been attending the building committee meetings, and one of the things that surprised me was when the chair of the committee said to keep the costs looking low, just count construction, not staff, not programming, not infrastructure, such as bringing utilities to the HCAL building, and not repaving the roads afterwards. So, be very careful about the cost that is cited, because it seems to me that there's an emphasis on keeping it low when, in fact, there will be additional costs that are not apparent: staff, programming, infrastructure, utilities, repaving the roads. Thank you.
Great. I thank you. If you want, sure.
I'm not sure that you fully understood the distinctions I was trying to draw. I was, in, in those discussions, there are a number of factors to take into account. Nobody's trying to hide costs on my committee, and we will be as outgoing as, as possible. What I was discussing was that if this project requires an article at town meeting that has to get a two-thirds vote, and then requires an override vote among the general public, I want everyone to understand what money is actually going to the senior center. The fact of the matter is that the town has known for a long time that that roadway is, is pretty crummy, and, and that there were, are improvements that ought to be made to the park generally. I'm all for that. It'll be in the budgets. But my position is, that shouldn't be something that the senior center project is going to end up paying for, since it's benefiting everybody, and it's not specifically related. If the town can't give us a driveway unless we put that in the override vote, fine, we will, we will do that. In terms of operations, again, we're not trying to hide anything about expenses. We will have rough estimates from the architects and others on how much it should cost to run this building. But again, you, you don't include the costs of operating the town departments as a component of the override or the, the two-thirds vote to authorize the capital project. Those are ordinary expenses, not something that would go into the capital. So, admittedly, everyone understands and will be looking at the fact that, and I'm not sure how many would disagree with it, that a senior center sufficient to meet the needs of the community in Hingham currently requires, and in the future will require, more than one person, one director, running the whole thing. And these operating decisions will all be taken into account by the town, the advisory and the board, with, when you are considering what the ongoing costs of operation of the town are going to be. But again, to my way of thinking, those are not things that we have customarily included in a warrant article for the construction project itself, which is going to require a borrowing and an override.
Thank you, sir. All right, Christine, come on up.
Hi, Christine Smith, Two Park Circle. And thank you all for the, for the discussion. And it strikes me that I used to be the school advocate when my kids were little, and pretty soon, I'm going to qualify to be at the senior center. Things don't happen quickly in, in Hingham, as we know, and usually we end up with a better project because of it. And having said that, when I was sort of geeking out and looking at all of my old Morn books and capital outlay and all those types of things, and I spoke about this at town meeting, I'm going to be a little bit redundant for those comments, and that, to ju, sort of to Judy's point, we can't be in silos when we're looking at this stuff. And I know, you know, Julie, I appreciate the comment about looking at it again. I know Liz was on the feasibility, the Sustainability Budget Task Force. But when I look at a number, like $147 million for capital between fiscal '27 and fiscal '30, I think it's about an $1,100 increase per household, average household in Hingham. That's not including an override. And when I looked at the forecast, the numbers frightened me, because as a senior, hopefully that'll be retiring soon, I can't afford it. And so, I want to really make sure, and I heard a lot of that discussion at town meeting, and as a person that's run debt exclusion overrides and operating overrides, based upon that discussion, if you don't pare back that project and it comes in at a high number, I just fear that you do all the work and it doesn't get approved, and then you're back to square one. And that's a real, real concern. And it also seems to me, and again, I haven't been involved. I've had a very lovely summer not being involved in, in town things. But you've got to not only look to the taxpayer as the source of revenue, but the things that we had, you know, sort of looked at in the past, had mentioned things like maybe a transfer tax. There's got to be other, other ways of, of producing income that doesn't just fall to the taxpayer. I haven't heard any discussion about, you know, excess properties. We've got, you know, the old light plant, and maybe those things are happening. But if they are, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen any communications about that. So, it, it just feels like it's always going to the taxpayer, and I think there's a real risk in that. Because if you're looking in the next five years for $147 million of capital that you're going to have to borrow, that's a two-thirds, two-thirds a town meeting, and then it's a majority at the polls in the privacy of the ballot box, when who knows what's going to happen in the next five years with the, with the country and with locally. It's very easy to vote yes on the floor at town meeting and no in the privacy of the ballot box. And you have got to think about that as you design this building, and the people that are going to use it, and that people are going to pay for it. I, I can't stress it enough, because I don't, that was a close vote. And a close vote at town meeting, if you don't listen to what people are saying, is going to be a lose vote on the next floor of town meeting, in my opinion. So, I just, and I want the senior center. I support it. I think we need it. But we have got to look at the totality of things, and not just always coming to the taxpayer to pay for everything. So, thank you for your efforts.
So, thank you for that. And I would note, Christine, you make a great point. And one of our, when we had our goal discussion, we did talk about other ways to generate revenue outside of property tax increases. And we specifically talked about looking at our inventory of buildings, and I think the hope is to try to sell some of them going forward. So, your point was, I listened to you at town meeting, you made a good point, and I agree with you. We should look at some other ways to raise money that don't include property taxes, and that is definitely a high on our list. So, thank you. taxes, and that is definitely a high on our list. So, thank you.
And part of the capital planning study that we're working on identifying the properties in the town and their use of, the use of the properties will help us come up with potential properties that we can, we can make a surplus and.
I'm just going to add one thing, and I'm glad to hear that. But when I go to a town meeting and we're paying a lot of money for roofs on schools, in a Plymouth River School, you know, I don't mean to always go back to schools, but population is decreasing, budgets are increasing, but it keeps happening. So we can study it as much as we want, but at some point, we got, we're great at studying stuff, but we got to implement it. I don't know if we're going to be doing an update on the budget task force. I know how much work that is. But we have to start doing something. I know it, Foster, I'm happy to see it, I'm down the street, but a lot of it's empty. And I know a lot of things are sort of, we hope the Commonwealth helps. I mean, Tom, you had mentioned something about funding from the Commonwealth, but a lot of times the Commonwealth doesn't always get it right. We have to get it right because there's just, there's just too much at risk not to get it right. So, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the studies, but we got to start, time just goes by, as we all know, it goes very, very quickly. And we really got to, you really got to start, you know, some action. And so, thank you. I know it's not easy and I appreciate you sitting in those seats.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Matthews?
Ted Matthews, 102 Hershey. That was an excellent response to Hillary's question. And you're right. And these, Christine and Judy, you brought up excellent points tonight. I just wanted to bring up the location of this proposed center. I know this is a vote potentially for OPM, but Bearco Park is a natural resource. If you're talking about chipping six acres into it, it's really, I've been on that committee now for 12 years. It's a beautiful place. I don't think it's the right place for this. There are other places like Plymouth River School, you know. Facility would be great for the town. I don't think that's the right place for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just respond?
Sure, yeah, briefly, briefly, because I think we need to.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. In terms of value and cost, there are some people in Hangum who can easily just head out to Linden Ponds and sail off into the sunset. There are a hell of a lot, most of the citizens of Hangum, who aren't in that luxury category and for whom, after having spent their lives paying money for schools and educating their children and everything else, a local senior center that doesn't charge you an arm and a leg for every little thing you get is the community resource for that entire large section. And the cost compared to what it would be if all of those people were being forced to do it on their own dime at commercial rates is infinitesimal. And it's a good deal over the period of time. Is replacing one of the existing big concrete buildings that's up there. Nobody sees it, but it's up there behind the museum. So it is knocking down and getting rid of one of those old things. And it's rebuilding on a site that is already built. And it's outside the fence where you get into the actual park. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, briefly, because I think we've hammered this down pretty good, but if you could just take maybe two minutes.
I won't be long. First of all, just a couple of points. I know many people that live in Linden Ponds, and I'm happy to tell you that I'm on their list to go to Linden Ponds. However, I am hearing more and more from my friends at Linden Ponds that they're finding it difficult to live there, too, because their rates are going up, because they use Hangum water. They use Hangum electric, electricity, too. So they are also impacted by the rates there. And there are many people that are struggling to see their life going to continue the way that they thought it was. So it's not Linden Ponds, oh, they're so lucky, and the rest of us senior citizens. We're all in this together. We're all senior citizens in Hangum. So I, I see both sides. I want to stay in my house. I don't want to go to Linden Ponds. But as you so eloquently put it every day, we just got our tax bill. We see it go up, 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 up. We thought, oh, well, we'll go to Linden Ponds. Then I hear their rates are going up, 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 up. So the question becomes, where do we go? Well, we'll just cut back on other things. We just want to stay in Hangum. This is our home. We have grandchildren that live here, children that live here, and we've dedicated our lives to living in this town. So, but the one other thing I wanted to talk, and just one little thing that has rubbed me, they talk about the increase in the number of senior citizens. Hangum committed to bringing Linden Ponds to the town of Hangum. I don't know how many years ago, 15, 20 years ago. They knew when that they were coming into the town of Hangum, that it, at the time, was the largest senior development in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the build-out plan was significant, yet they brought it into Hangum. So we've had this increase in costs. We have thousands of seniors over there. And oh, by the way, yes, they didn't have water, too. I don't know if you know that or not. They did not have water. On the seventh and the eighth and the top two floors, there was no water. So they're suffering with the rest of us. But if these are decisions that we are responsible as citizens to make, then what we have to do is we have to do the planning that she is requesting that we all want so that we can all live here and all have water. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with P3 Incorporated for the owner's project manager, OPM Services, for the new Center for Active Living Building in an amount not to exceed $130,000.
Second.
All those favored by real call Liz.
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm going to ask while the motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consider the amendment to the agreement with Seal Coating Incorporated, doing business as Indus to complete additional roadwork. Jay, are you going to join us up here? Thank you. So Jay, why don't you tell us a little about this project?
Sure. Good evening. So this particular project, it is not a particular project. It is one of the three primary contractors that we work with doing, in our road reconstruction program. Indus manages very specific elements and the principal elements that they take care of for us are crack sealing and micro-surfacing. We are also going to explore with some preliminary borings this year, an innovative road reconstruction approach that may be appropriate on some streets in Hangum. So it's called cold-in-place recycling, but it requires an engineered design to take place ahead of time. And so as part of this contract, I've also budgeted that we're going to budget for the road course in a handful of streets and take a look at what the cost difference is compared to our traditional methods. Micro-surface is the biggest chunk of their work and that micro-surface element can be used both as a pavement preservation piece. Well, I say it's a pavement preservation element and wearing surface of asphalt or partial asphalt that we have often laid down over top newly paved roads. But it's also appropriate to utilize this material to preserve existing pavement that's been in place for longer periods of time, provided the structural base has held up. And it can increase the longevity of those roads. And so we'll be, we're approaching using it for that purpose within a couple of neighborhoods as well.
Jay, David, anything to add?
The only thing I have to add is now that JR is on the other side of my office now and I'm over at DPW, my knowledge of road paving has gone through the roof. But as far as the contract, I have nothing, nothing else to add.
JR, note, after that torrential rain we had last week, I walked around downtown and the crosswalks, repainted red, are 10 times safer than what they were. So, thank you for that. Also, thank you for making the improvements on the crosswalks. Well worth it. They're safer. I know a lot of people reported slipping. People with disabilities reached out to us. So my compliments on the work you and Ashley did on those crosswalks downtown.
Yeah, that was largely driven by Ashley. She did a great job. And our contractor made a great material selection to significantly improve traction. I think it was also great that we could get all the structures that are within the crosswalks up to the appropriate grade so that we didn't have all those extraneous trip hazards.
Thank you. Julie, any questions?
I just want to confirm that the funding for this, these projects, the road projects, are chapter 90 funding from the state that just became available?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just one. I know the first bullet here, the micro-surface, it's some of those streets I recognize as being recently paved. So is that that final step that you were talking about?
Correct. When we're, a lot of times this can be used as a wearing course and it also has pavement preservation elements to it, depending on the exact reconstruction that we perform in a road. For example, a lot of times we may just use binder within a road. Binder's a little more coarse, but it can leave some surface voids that would collect water under normal circumstances. But when you drop the micro-surface over that, it seals up those voids and shed, and we shed the water very efficiently.
Okay, great. And will the residents in these neighborhoods be notified before the work is done?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And when do you see, when do you plan on starting the work?
Well, we're pushing our contractors to go as quickly as they can. The frustration with waiting on the state for the money to become available is that it prevents us from opening the contract, which then prevents us from getting on their schedules. Now, with that said, I've done a lot of legwork to notify the contractors ahead of time that we did have a lot of work coming for them and made some specific requests. So we're hopeful that we can get a lot of this work done by Indus within, basically, we like to get it done in August at the latest.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
I think JR knows what I'm going to ask. So I live in Crow Point and I can't, I don't see the list of what this affects. Like Park Circle, it's, Crow Point, as we all know, has been a huge construction zone, particularly in front of my house because I live in the middle of it for the last year. So is this going to affect the paving? I know that they were out there today adding a sidewalk. And, you know, Bill, I thought of you, with that incredible amount of rain that we had, we flooded. It was a flood. And I don't know if part of it is because of the road surface hasn't been finished, but it's been a year. It's been over a year. And so if you can just comment that, I'd appreciate it.
Do you want me to read the list of streets?
No. The, the wearing course will be going on, again, all of Wampatack and Planters Field will be completed. It'll be, at least all of Wampatack will be an overnight job. And then Planters Field, we may do during the day, but it's going to depend on contractor mobilization, how much they can get done in any given night and how that rolls in. I believe we will be able to get in and out of that portion of Crow Point within the first two weeks of August. And then, I did send out separately, but I can make it public now, just for your edification as well and for the select board's education, next week, Foster School will begin their paving work in Downer Ave. So they have a specific scope of work that is under their site improvement contract. They'll be execute, they'll be, they'll begin executing that work next week. They'll get, they'll go in, they'll do reclaim. They will lay down binder by the end of the week. I will caution everyone, there will be raised structures for several weeks until they come back and put in the top course on that. For those who are wondering, well, what about the rest of Downer? The rest of Downer is scheduled to happen also within this timeframe. I have a tentative date of August 11th for the town's reconstruction work in Downer to begin. But we're still pushing on the contractor to pull that even farther forward and hopefully get everything wrapped up well before school opens.
Thank you. Your follow-up question? Yeah, go ahead.
Just because everyone asks me.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So, I don't know if you can answer, but with Foster School, they took out the sidewalk. So sort of on the Foster School side, between like the crossing guard and as you go up the hill, is that part of what you're talking about? Are they going to put that sidewalk back? I don't know if you know that in your.
Yes. And it's, they in fact had it all formed up and it'll be ready to pour very soon. They've also got to go back in, they're putting in new curb along the Foster School frontage. And DPW has committed to continuing sidewalk improvements along Downer Ave from the school to Otis. So that work, we're going to continue making those improvements and make sure that we've got a, you know, very passable space for kids that are walking to school.
Great. Because it's not, I walk my dog and there's no sidewalk and they move the fence. So it's a little tricky. And then do you coordinate with the state? Because Crow Point has also been a nightmare getting out at that traffic light on 3A because they've been doing the sewer project since, I think the sign says April 7th. And it's still happening and it backs up everywhere. And I guess I would say it will continue to back up everywhere. My request would be, when that's happening, when you tear up those roads, you need to put a police detail at Otis as it comes out on 3A closer to the harbor. Because every, no one will go through that intersection with the traffic light. So everybody will cut over Otis Street and sort of hit that weird intersection kind of where Hangum Lobster Pound used to be. But there's no police detail. So you're, it's, it is really dangerous. So I would ask, you know, I'm all about making the budget smaller, but I'm sorry, with a police detail somewhere in that police detail budget, there needs to be a police officer at that other intersection or it's, you're going to have an accident. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. With that, I would take a motion.
I make a motion. Skip 20.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, consider amendment number four to the agreement with TL Edwards Incorporated to complete additional roadwork. So, Jay, go ahead.
Yes. So this is the second of our major contractors that we work with on an annual basis to repave the roads. TL Edwards is an asphalt supplier, but in our case, they provide and install. And so we have scoped out their work this year for several roads. These would include Downer Ave, as we just talked about, Otis Street, Scotland Street, Polk Road, Palmer's Lane, Fairfield Street, and Mark Lane. Not, for those wondering about Scotland Street, unfortunately is not all of Scotland Street, but there will be forthcoming work in future years to complete Scotland Street. Their work is primarily, the two elements that they handle for us generally are milling and the. and, like I said, the placement of pavement. And they're, they do excellent work. We've had good experience with them. You know, I, the, the quality of the material and the quality of the finished product is very good.
Thank you, David. Anything to add?
Just to add, this is amendment four, so this is the last amendment with the specific contract. So, JR and I, we've already kind of discussed going out to bid. What's this contents?
Well, it, although it won't be us necessarily going out to bid, this is one of the MAPC South Shore Consortium contracts. So, it's bid corporately with all of, with several South Shore communities.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
And just the funding source, this is chapter 90 as well?
So, it's primarily chapter 90, and it also includes some budget from engineering and DPW road building accounts.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie, any questions?
Just on the funding source, I was wondering the same, but so the four, it's 450 from, 450,000 from chapter 90, and the 400 from DPW and engineering, or the other you're on?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? All right, now take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign amendment number four to the agreement with TL Edwards Incorporated to complete additional roadwork in an amount not to exceed $850,000.
Second?
All of the favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm going as well, the motion carries. All right. JR, one more for you. David, you're out, you're done. Thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
David, I know that you revolve all those projects this week, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
You went above and beyond, and long way for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion of proposed funding and locations of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs, to improve pedestrian safety. All right, JR, what do you got?
Yes. So, back in December, Mast dot put forward a grant opportunity, a grant of equipment for rectangular rapid flash beacons. And I was, I believe, the very first person to enter grants into that, or grant applications into that process. And I entered seven of them. However, I did not have all of the requisite data. I was basing it off of engineering judgment and an understanding of the conditions of the roads. Without having that hard data to look at, they deferred my application, and I went out and got the data. So, I'm happy to say that with the new fiscal year, Mast dot made this equipment grant available again, and they awarded all of the locations that I had originally recommended to the town. Roughly, that could be up to about $140,000 worth of equipment. And the cost to install those is much less, running to about $60,000 to $70,000 total to get all of those in. So, and some of that is even, that we have to do, we have to make sure that at each location, that it's a fully ADA compliance crosswalk. So, that includes the ADA compliant landings on both ends, which, we have a lot of great crosswalks, but not all of them are up to current standards. So, where we need them, we will be going back and putting those in. The locations that we have reviewed, oh, you've got them up, great. The, the first location is Hull Street, near the Glastonbury Abbey. There is a fair amount of pedestrian traffic there that goes to the Abbey from the Abbey's residential buildings across the street. So, especially when they have conferences and things, that can be very busy. Many of the residents there all, also happen to be elderly, and may need some additional time to get across the street, at, especially with the slightly higher speeds that you see on Hull Street. The next location that we were looking at is Levitt Street, which is the 228-leg between Irving Street and Winter Street. Part of this is, there is actually a crosswalk right where Levitt Street turns towards Main Street, but the visibility, because that crosswalk is at an angle, it, the crosswalk occurs right at the angle in the road, the visibility is not optimal. And so, what we're looking to do is provide protected crosswalks on either side of that angle point, and this is the first of those, so that you'd have an opportunity to cross where you have the highest visibility. Spot number three is that next location, which is Short Street just south of Levitt Street, or where you're approaching Main Street. And that provides that second opportunity where you've got good visibility in both directions, and we can try to safely shepherd people across 228. Next is continuing on 228, there is a theme. It can sometimes be tough to get across that major artery. We're looking at providing an RFB at, at the Haley Field Crosswalk, so not too far from, from where we are here. And then, the next location that was awarded, although we're somewhat reconsidering it, the next location that was awarded is also on Main Street, but it's at Arnold Street. So, those two crosswalks would act in conjunction with one another. It would allow us to remove the existing crosswalk at Cole Corner, which technically crosses three lanes, and there are a lot of conflicting vehicle movements through that crosswalk. So, we feel that this arrangement pulling pedestrians away from the angle point of the road, and away from a highly trafficked intersection, and moving them to locations that have good visibility, and without all of the conflicting traffic movements, we feel that these are better locations. Now, when I said Arnold is, might be up for consideration, we did look at the possibility of moving that location to Lynn Scott Street, which would then cross into what is colloquially known as Jackass Park. And that location does have the benefit of also connecting to, directly to Hobart and Hersi Streets. So, there may be an opportunity to get some infill pedestrian connections that provide continuous ADA compliant walkways or pathways if we relocate the crosswalk to there. I will, I would not recommend doing both Arnold and Lynn Scott. Arnold is a good location, and if we wanted to take advantage of the grant, then we would go ahead and approve it, and, and that would be that. And I'd work out the additional sidewalk that we might need near Jackass Park. I'd work that out separately. But, if we wanted to consider Lynn Scott as an alternative to Arnold, then what I would do is hold off on moving forward with the Arnold Street RRFB, because we'd be in violation of the federal procurement on that piece. So, with that, continuing on to the next one that was awarded is at Downer Avenue, at the Foster School Crosswalk. So, just below Planters Field, a very heavily trafficked crosswalk that serves all the schoolchildren. That one was awarded. The actual crosswalk improvements are all within the Foster Site Improvement Contract. So, we're going to wait till they're done, and then we'll put the RRFB in. And then, lastly is, the, the last location that was approved is an RRFB for a currently unmarked crosswalk located near the Benjamin Lincoln House and the Old Ordinary. This crosswalk, this proposed crosswalk ties into other improvements at Fountain Square that we are looking to implement later this year. I still have to bring a final plan back to the Traffic Committee and to you, but the conceptual plans have been in review for some time. And this provides us one early piece that we would be able to install early on in that process, early on in that construction process, and kick that project off.
All right. Great. So, you're not looking for a vote tonight, you're looking for feedback, correct?
Yes, for feedback.
All right. So, I'll start. I think it's, you know, I think that these are, are effective. The one that you installed at the post office has helped pedestrians safely cross that street. That's a very busy, dangerous area to cross that street there. I think it's helped, it's helped. I think all of these locations are great, and I love the fact you're taking advantage of a grant. So, I'm comfortable with you moving forward. My only concern is, I don't want residents going to work one day and coming home and seeing one of those things, you know, in, in front of their house. So, we just need to let the, the impacted abutters know that the plan is to install these, and give them an opportunity to, to give us feedback, and possibly offer mitigation if, if it's necessary. So, I'm fine with you moving forward at this juncture, particularly with the grant. But we just want, before we decide we're going to move forward, I want to make sure people know where we're putting these things, so they have an opportunity to, to give us some feedback.
Then what I'll do is I will go out to each location and provide a notice that this might be coming in the near term to the closest two, three, four houses on each side. We are planning to hold a Traffic Committee meeting, provided I can get all the cats in one space.
Get one of the cats.
We are planning to hold that next week, either the 22nd or the 23rd. So, I'll provide that information as well in the notice, and they'd have an opportunity just then to actively comment on the, the proposal.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Julie, any questions?
On the slide, you also had one more location, Cross Street, south of Terrasi Road, am I, is that still, in Myers Farm, is that still part of the plan, or is that not?
So, that was never submitted as an application in the original round. We are going to continue looking at that as a good option. It does meet, as I'm looking at it again, yeah, it does meet the, the recommendations that Federal Highway puts out for the use of RRFBs. So, we would, that would certainly be one of the ones that are higher on our priority list. The other locations that we are actively considering installing, or the one other location that's come forward that we're looking at is actually at the middle school.
Great. And then, also, I am glad that you will have the opportunity to socialize this and talk this through with the Traffic Committee.
Yes.
And then, maybe people who want to follow that or give input could, could attend that meeting, and the Traffic Committee meeting would be held in the evening, correct?
Yeah. We're looking at 7:00 PM times generally going forward.
Okay. Great. And then, one final question. The, I'm very happy because, about the crossings on Levitt Street, because a lot of people, they don't want to backtrack back to the flashers that are at the library to cross 228. And so, then they're just literally just walking out and crossing the street and taking their chances, and it's really scary. But, are you eliminating the crosswalk that's at that dangerous curve?
Yes.
So, you're just going to eliminate that, and then one, put one on either, either side? So, these are your options?
If I may?
Yeah.
There are no dangerous curves.
Okay.
There are simply dangerous behaviors.
Yeah. Okay. You're right. And it's a curve that I've seen lots of potential danger of people walking across the street, and, so, I am pleased that you're offering alternatives to that location.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Liz, any questions or comments?
Excellent. Thank you, JR. In general, I'm very supportive of this. I think that these beacons really do improve pedestrian safety. We've seen that. So, I'm thrilled to have more in town, thrilled about the grant opportunity. I appreciate you making the abutters aware, and that, so, we'll need to do that quickly, obviously.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Because you said the meeting is next Tuesday?
It'll be next Tuesday or Wednesday, yes.
Okay. And I agree that a beacon at the Hingham Middle School is a good idea. So, is that a separate application to add that location?
Um, because, you know, it's funny, the different kinds of calls that we get, and one of the calls that we received was a request for a beacon at that location, particularly because the increased bus fees. And so, the assumption that there will be more middle schoolers trying to walk to school. And that makes a lot of sense to me. And that also means walking home from school, sometimes when there may not be a crossing guard there. So, it would be very appropriate to put one there. Like I said, we had already budgeted for a couple of these within our annual budget. So, my intention on that one was to go ahead and move forward with it, and get that installed this year.
Okay. Great. Yes, I agree. There'll be more walkers and probably more parents driving, so.
Yeah.
More need for a light. Great.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Oh. Deidra? Deidra, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much. I just wanted to reiterate my support for JR and the Traffic Committee's effort with the rapid flashing beacon, especially in the downtown area. I, oh, sorry, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society, 34 Main Street, and we are grateful to partner with JR and the Traffic Committee for rapid flashing beacon on Lincoln Street as, as part of traffic calming measures around Fountain Square. I know there will be some who, who, you know, voice disagreement for this technology to be in historic districts, but I do want to compliment JR and the team, who, if you've had a chance to see the RRFB in front of Hennessy's, between the post office and Hennessy's, it is so beautifully done with both the fluted towers and how you press the button on a separate piece than the, the light fixture. And even though, when that was being proposed, I know this board and JR faced some pushback, and then it goes in, and it's beautiful and used. And I am, I'm grateful for the proactive measures here, and especially for it to be covered by grants, because, well, it would be great to not have any of this technology in our historic village. The reality is, with the amount of vehicular traffic and the need to prioritize pedestrian safety, it is a necessary reality, and I think that JR is doing a wonderful job helping us improve pedestrian safety throughout town. And so, I just want to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Deidra. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
We're not going to have it.
I'm sorry, we're not going to take a motion. Actually, move to the next agenda item.
You have some support.
Yeah. But I guess you was looking for consensus. I guess there is consensus. Is that correct? Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, JR.
All right, JR, thanks very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of MBTA proposed revised Route 220 bus service in Hingham. We have with us today MBTA rep Claudia Bravo Amontey, who's the Director of Service Planning. I don't think the other MBTA rep is here, but, but also, R is going to take the lead on this.
Bill, do you mind if I just provide a little bit of an introduction?
Sure.
This is, this is a, an opportunity that's been in development for, for quite some time. I know that many people have been pursuing this in different channels, and the, the exciting opportunity here is regular Route, MBTA Route 220 bus service to and from the Hingham Shipyard. For Hingham, it's a tremendous opportunity. I think we all know that the ferry service is tremendously popular, and that it is become an important weekday, as well as a weekend, you know, way to get to and from Hingham. What we've always lacked is a reliable final connection piece, connecting the, the ferry terminal to the Hingham Square area. We, we see it as a great opportunity to, to make the case for an easy and attractive trip to Hingham. I know... I know that the Downtown Association and others who have been talking about attracting new interest, and certainly through our REV 250 efforts, we see it as a great way to help make the case. Tonight, we're joined by the MBTA team, who will talk us through the proposal, which will include removing two stops from the Route 3A corridor in order to accommodate an inbound and outbound stop at the ferry terminal. They'll point to the need for a couple of parking spaces to make it easy for buses to get in and out. And together, we look forward to your questions. So Claudia Bravo Monje will share her presentation, and she's the Director of Service Planning at the MBTA. She'll be joined by Nick Tomcavaj, and I apologize if I don't have that pronounced correctly. He's a manager of bus stops. He's the, he is their resource for the details that come with planning and executing bus stops, and I'm sure that together we can answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Claudia, go ahead.
Great. My name is Claudia Bravo, and I'm here with Nick Tomcavaj. We're both part of the service planning team. I am the Director of Service Planning, and he's a bus stop manager. Thank you for taking the time to hear our proposal. So I will briefly present a little bit of context of what has been the service before, what the service is now, and what we would like to be the service in the future. So Route 220 has had trips before to Shipyard, to the Shipyard, before 2020. However, this variant of the route was not throughout the day. It was just two trips inbound and two trips outbound, and therefore it could cause confusion on people, and therefore we didn't have that much ridership. And also, of course, coordinating the schedules with the ferry was almost impossible, because you only had two morning trips in the inbound and two afternoon at the outbound. So when we are reviewing now the demand, we see that we do get a lot of requests to get a better connection between the ferry and the bus, given that it's a long walk from the current stops to the Shipyard. And the current ridership shows that we have high ridership in the stops that are near the Shipyard. So right before and after, we have our highest ridership besides the edge of the route. So if we take a closer look into this ridership, on fall of 2024, we had a total of 550 inbound riders and 560 outbound riders on a regular weekday, and we also have high ridership on the weekends. If we see here at the outbound stop on Lincoln Street and Sergeant William Terry Drive, this is a stop that would close, and it is our third stop with the highest ridership. What would that mean? That would mean that people would need, that want to go towards this area, not to the Shipyard, would need to walk to the nearest stop, or would need to drop off at the nearest stop, which is 772 feet away. And so the pattern that we see here is that people are getting off from Quincy in the morning. So people are coming from Quincy, stopping here, and then are probably, can go, some of them, to the Shipyard, or might go to other places around this area. And on the inbound, we would need to close this stop. I don't know if you can see when I point with the, oh yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
To inbound 349 Lincoln Street stop. As you can see, this one also has a lot of ridership with 58 ons and six ops on a daily basis. And so this is people who are going from the Shipyard towards Quincy Center in the afternoon. So we're basically like going back. We have a pattern of people coming in, and then pattern of people going back. And if we do the Shipyard stop, then we would have to get rid of that stop, and people that do not want to go to the Shipyard would have to drop off at the next stop, which is 685 feet away. So that is not a big distance, according to our standards. So the plan for the fall of 2025, which is in August, starts on August 24th, is to extend all of our trips to the Shipyard. So all of the trips on the weekdays and on the weekends, inbound and outbound, would go through the Shipyard. And therefore, this portion of the route would not be served anymore, this portion of Lincoln Street. But, and therefore, as I was telling you, some stops will have to close, but there are alternatives, and also it seems like people might be already going to the Shipyard. So some would be, some of this ridership would be basically relocated to that new So which is our planned stop? Our planned stop is right outside of the ferry terminal, so it's a great connection. And currently, both stops, to be in line with our bus stop design guidelines, would need more space for the bus to comfortably park and pick up and drop off people with an accessible manner. So for that to happen, we would need to eliminate a parking spot here and a parking spot here. So these two parking spots are what is currently impeding for us to have a bus stop or a bus stopping here or here. We also have another concern, that is a bollard, but that is outside of the purview of this meeting. But yes, so our request here would be, if it's possible, to approve the removal of these two parking spots for the buses to be able to comfortably park and pick up and drop off people. And also, as a little bit of extra context, this bus stop was approved in 2009 also. And it used, so this is a stop that used to work. It has not been served in the past six years, and given our new guidelines, we would need this, two parking spots removed, so we can reactivate them.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that is it.
All right, that was a good summation. Thank you. All right, anything to add?
It might be worth just talking about implementation. Claudia, could you speak to what the next steps would be, assuming the select board supports this proposal?
Yes, actually, the biggest issue that we have are the parking spots, and then we would be able to activate these two stops, and the service would resume in August 24th. We would start serving these two stops again on August 24th of this year.
And if I-
So, yes, sure.
If I could just add one point that we had talked about earlier, and that is, obviously, changing the stops is important, and it will impact current ridership. And I understand it's your plan to notify your riders-
Yes.
-of this well in advance as part of this transition, so when the schedule change is announced, it will not be the first time, you know, people will hear about it.
Yes. So our usual communication plan for these kind of changes, it's around three to two weeks before the actual change happens, and we make sure to do outreach to people. Sometimes we go out to the stops that will be affected. We definitely always put advisories in them, telling them this is going to close. We explain the change, and we also give them the numbers that they could call if they need extra information, or if they have any complaint. But yes, we make sure to put out advisories and make sure that people are informed at least two to three weeks in advance.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Art. Thank you, and thanks to the team at the T for putting this together. And this is something we've been working on really for a year now. We've been trying to connect the ferry to downtown, and to get people off the ferry and the Shipyard, more into downtown. I spoke with Amy Brown, Deidra, others involved with Downtown Commerce, and they were very excited about this proposal, as am I. I think it does help us make that connection, and I think we need to publicize it. So we want to attract more people to Hingham. We want to connect them. We want to let them know, you can get off the ferry, there's a bus right there, you can get into downtown, you can go to the Lincoln House, you can go to the great restaurants we have, the great shops we have, get back on the bus, take the ferry back to Boston. So I think we need to make sure people know it's going to be available, and I'm just thrilled to see this finally happening, and I think it's going to be a plus for downtown. Liz, what are your thoughts? Having been a former Downtown Association-
Yes, and we have Judy Smith.
Yeah, Judy as well, Judy as well, that's right, that's right.
Absolutely. I mean, we've been talking about how to connect the ferry to downtown, the Shipyard to downtown, and this seems like a very logical approach. So I'm definitely supportive of it. I appreciate you taking the steps and having a communication plan and notifying riders. Anecdotally, I know many of the riders are teachers at Suezola that get off at that stop, so I would just want that school to be notified, which we can handle within our office, but I know that's an audience that is, or a group of riders that probably uses that stop quite a bit. But I think in general, being closer to the ferry terminal is a nice positive for many people. Certainly, we want to continue advertising coming from Boston to Hingham, especially over the next year with REV 250, so this is a nice complement to that.
Julie, any comments?
I love this plan, I love this idea, and especially the connection of the Shipyard and the ferry to downtown, as you both have spoken to. I just have two questions. The first question is, are you able to link up the bus service to the ferry arrival? You've done a really good job with the bus service out to Hull Gut, that picks up people who get right off of the boat that comes into Hull from Boston, and then they hop right on the bus. So is that possible at this location as well?
We have different frequencies, but the frequency of the bus, which will be around 40 minutes on average, is, like I was looking at the ferry schedules, which can be from 25 to 35 minutes in the morning, and the 40 minutes does not completely align, but it is a short wait in the morning and in the afternoon, especially in the peakiest times when we have like more buses and more service of the ferry, too.
Okay.
It is not perfectly aligned, because we have different frequencies, and, yeah, and how the ferry and how the bus frequencies are determined can be like on different set of metrics, and so they're not perfectly aligned, but yes, there is, like the bus has like a longer span of service. It is sometimes more frequent, sometimes less frequent than the other, but it is not like a bad connection that people would have to wait very long.
Okay. And then the other question is that the vote we're taking tonight would be to approve the request to eliminate the two parking spaces on Shipyard Drive. Is there anything else approval-wise, or, you know, does it have to go before any other permitting board to take away those parking spaces, or that's the end of it?
That is all a request.
Okay. And then actually, I thought I had one more quick question. What about the bollards? So you don't think it's ideal, the bollards there? Do you take that up with?
Yes, we have reviewed what is, what we could do about the bollards. I think we have to review it with the state.
Okay.
So I think Art might give a little bit more context there, but this is not part of what we can decide with the town of Hingham, and so we will be working on that, too.
Okay.
But what we ask from the board is to get the two parking spaces.
And the bollards have to be taken care of? That issue has to be resolved before the service starts?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
We have provided service with the bollards there before.
Okay.
So we will resume service, and we will try to get them out before, but if that doesn't happen, then it might happen during service.
Thank you.
If I could, I just want to address your first question, Julie, and that is, I spoke with Emily Wentworth, our Community Development Director, and she noted that there's no role for the planning board in this.
Okay.
In this discussion now.
Okay, thank you.
And just one more question, if I may. Do you have any ADA compliance concerns with the new plan?
It's clear that the MBTA is on track to doing it right. The design for the bus stops entails creating space for landing, landing spaces for getting on the buses, as well as getting on the buses. That's what these, the gray boxes, I think depict. It's where those gray boxes are, where the bollards have to come out. So as the bollards come out, they'll be fully accessible on either side of the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public input into this agenda item? Go ahead, Judy.
I had no idea I'd still be here, Judy Smith, 89.
I'm glad you are.
89, I'm so glad I'm here, 89 North Street. This is terrific. We have, at least since 2004 or '05, we've been talking about this, so 20 years. Now, I am a ferry rider, and I would just make three observations, because I think it's worth noting in your decision to remove those parking spaces. One is, there's a dedicated parking for the harbor master there. The other is that right before and right after the boats leave, I'm sure you all know, there are just tons of people crossing the streets, and they don't use the crosswalk, because it's just like a sieve. And then the other is that it's kind of a kiss-and-ride area that bus stops- ... are prevented from doing that. So I ask that in your design of this, that you consider the people crossing the street, the harbor master, and the people giving commuters rides. Thank you.
Great points, thank you. Amy.
Amy Farrell, 95 Central Street, longtime ferry rider. I can't emphasize enough what the traffic flow is coming off of the ferries, and nobody uses that crosswalk. Nobody uses it. So hopefully, the scheduling is going to be considerate of that. The other is, I'm curious why you're eliminating the two stops? Why couldn't you keep the stop at William Terry? Go into the Shipyard, pick and drop off people? Because 600 feet is 600 extra feet. It's Suezola, as well as, I think it's Bridges, that might be? That's, I think, the staff that comes and uses that stop, so that's a question, I guess, for the T.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, could we keep the stop there at William B. Terry Drive?
Yes, that is a great question. So actually, the bus has to turn left, and that would mean that the bus has to be, has to park on the right to draw people off and pick people up from this stop, and then do a left turn. So that is not possible to do.
So that's two lanes.
To go to the right and then turn to the left to get into the Shipyard. So that is why this stop would be eliminated. And the other stop is around here. It doesn't show, but it's right across the Lincoln stop, opposite of Lincoln Plaza.
I got it, I got it. All right, thank you. All right, we'll take some more public comment. I see, I think Clark, you had your hand up first, so we'll go to Clark Frazier.
Yes, Clark Frazier, 50 Bonnie Barre Circle. This is actually the one I was waiting for. I believe we need to have an entire public meeting to discuss the nuances of all this- I believe we need to have an entire public meeting to discuss the nuances of all the stops. As I think, I disagree with that. The bus could have a stop in front of the AT&amp;T store after it turns. And actually, coming out if the bus was stopped on Shipyard Drive, that'd be much safer than parking, than stopping on 3A. I don't know whether there's, I think there's a stop further down the Stop and Shop, but those stops are very dangerous and badly laid out right now and should be looked at at very time-consuming across 3A. So it'd be nice to have two stops, have a stop entering the shipyard and leaving the shipyard on that side of 3A. Now, that does leave the people who work over across 3A having to cross, but at least I think that would involve fewer people. And I still think you need a stop up at the, in front of the Stop and Shop. And I mean, we could go into the details of that, and I think that some curb work will have to be done, you know, to make sure that there's a pickup and drop off area or a cell phone lot or something for the cars. And the last question is, who owns Shipyard Drive? Is that the town or is that the developer?
I think Samuel's owns it.
I mean, so I'm, you know, I've worked with the MBTA a lot, so I want to see a public meeting like this Ellen Hall where people had a chance and time to speak just on this subject. And the other observation is that the number of people who use that bus to access that area don't live in Hingham because they work in Hingham. In fact, I think that's what keeps the bus going. And finally, a last thing, is I used that bus about a month ago to get back to my car because I was, came back after ferry service. The most difficult problem using the bus, particularly on a weekend, is figuring out what red line train will actually connect with it. And the MBTA did a superb job of making sure that I got there about 10 minutes after the bus left. So the hourly buses on weekends could actually be coordinated with the ferry possibly because the ferry runs hourly on weekends.
Clark.
Those are my patients. But we need, I need to see something more than just a, you know, a hit and run on the select board.
Thank you, Clark. Deirdre Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Deirdre Anderson. On behalf of the Hingham Historical Society, 34 Main Street, I just wanted to voice my support for this. As Art mentioned, we have been talking about this in terms of increasing heritage tourism in downtown with the Downtown Association. We'd also been working with the MBTA's community engagement team with Terri Chen. I know she's left, but to do excursions and give some itinerary options and have the community engagement team down to Hingham so that we could give further promotion to increased bus ridership, to take advantage of Hingham's shopping, dining, and tourism opportunities. So thanks so much to the MBTA team. We've already experienced great partnership with the ferries over some REV 250 programming, and I think this is going to be very exciting as we head into a busy and commemorative year. So thanks so much for working with us.
Thank you, Deirdre. And lastly, Joe Kelly, go ahead.
Joe Kelly, Southern Independence Lane. I just want to commend everybody for working so diligently on this. I know this is a big part of the Hingham Economic Development Plan, was to get people from the shipyard into downtown Hingham. And I think this is, you know, going to be great for everybody here in Hingham and commuters from Boston as well. The only question I have is, will the MBTA be providing bus shelters at the location for the drop off bus stops there? It's nice to be standing out there on a beautiful sunny day, but when it's raining or the middle of winter, you're pretty exposed in the middle of that parking lot. So it's just, that's my question. Will there be bus shelters provided at the stops?
Claudia, can you answer that one?
Sure. We currently do not have a plan to install shelters in that location. We do have a shelter plan. We can review it. We can review with the different towns. There is, but we can review, include this one into the review to see if that, but it's usually based on ridership. So this would be a bit of a strange one. We would have to wait to have some ridership to see if it meets the conditions. But yes, this is a good point, and we will make sure to include it and for review in the future.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Claudia and team, thank you so much. Art, thank you. And Art, I wanted to just encourage, at your next Downtown Association meeting, talk to Amy, Deirdre, others about how we can get right outside of Hingham so people know, Boston, come on down, take out our history, go to our museums, go to our wonderful restaurants. So with that, I would take a motion.
I would just like to add that if it's pouring rain and you're waiting for the bus, you could go into the ticket office for the boat. So that's right there, and I don't see what any problem would be to go in there. But shelters would be nice, too. I'm just-
Could point the foster model.
In the meantime.
If we could just respond to that comment, one thing that we can do is we can make sure there's an integration with the scheduling and ensure that, you know, that we have posted schedules or possibly there's an opportunity to provide real-time bus information so riders can wait inside that terminal building and have access to not just the bus schedule but perhaps real-time information. So in the harsh conditions, they can take advantage of the building and then step out to the bus stop just in time for the bus. So we'll consider that possibility as well.
I love that idea because, you know, you are waiting on the platform for the red line. You know how long, or the commuter rail, you have an expectation of how long you're going to wait. If the schedules don't sync up perfectly, then it's good to have an expectation of how long it'll take. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. With that, I would entertain a motion, if someone's inclined to make one.
Okay. I'll make a motion to support the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority's MBTA proposal to revise the Route 220 bus service route to include the Hingham MBTA ferry terminal along with two new proposed bus stop locations on Shipyard Drive, and to eliminate the existing bus stop locations at 349 Lincoln Street and Sergeant William Terry Drive. And further, to approve the MBTA's request to eliminate two parking spaces on Shipyard Drive adjacent to the Hingham MBTA ferry terminal to accommodate the two new proposed bus stop locations as shown on the Option 1 Plan included in the proposal submitted to the Town of Hingham Select Board by the MBTA, which is on file with the Select Board's office.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in as well. The motion carries unanimously. Thanks very much for all your work on this one. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. We do, I do anticipate several appointments this evening. So if my colleagues are ready to make some motions, we can work through the list.
Great. I'll make a motion to appoint Lance Mortland, Assistant DPW Superintendent, to the Southshore Regional Collaborative.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to appoint Cullen McGahy to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kate Schmidt to the Development and Industrial Commission for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2030.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to appoint Celia McLean to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to appoint Murnee Leary to the Hingham Public Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to appoint Graham Baker to the Human Rights Commission for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2026, as recommended by the school committee.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in as well. Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to appoint Christina Earl to the Traffic Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm in as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none, we would now turn to Town Administrator Select Board reports. So let me start with Art.
Sure. I just have one item to share. As I think we all feel when we step outside, the National Weather Service has announced a heat advisory that's in effect for Hingham and all of southern New England, really, from 11:00 AM today, Tuesday, the 15th, through expected 7:00 PM on July 17. Just want to remind folks that if there's a need to cool off, we have both the Hingham Public Library and the Center for Active Living available during their operating hours. And we've got more information on our website if folks have a need for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I got a push notification from MyHingham about the cooling station, which was very exciting. So just a plug for the MyHingham app. It's a free app. Go to the App Store. Everybody should download the MyHingham app.
That was very exciting to get that-
It was. I did the same thing. I was like, yes.
It's working.
MyHingham app is delivering. Nice.
Yes.
Michelle, anything?
Just one thing. So our new Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, Brittany Iacapone, will be starting this coming Monday, the 21st. So we are looking forward to welcoming her here in Hingham.
Thank you. Julie, anything tonight?
I don't want to be a broken record, but I just want to encourage anyone to watch the recording of the Board of Water Commissioners meeting that happened today, earlier before the Select Board meeting. The Superintendent Russell Tierney gave an excellent presentation of information about the water system and causes for disruption and brown water and breaks that we've been experiencing and what the Water Commission and the water system, rather, are doing to make it better for us. So I highly recommend people tuning into that recording when it becomes available on Harbor Media to come up to speed on all things water in Hingham. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, anything tonight?
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Just two things. First of all, obviously, a lot was done this evening. A lot of preparation went into tonight's work from Michelle, Art, Ross, David, JR, and many others. So thank you all for your hard work in making tonight's meeting successful. A lot was accomplished. And as I said earlier, next week, we will hear from the Center for Active Living Building Committee. They intend to introduce the current design for the Center for Active Living to the community, and we'd like to solicit feedback from people. So next Tuesday night, please zoom in or attend in person. Looking forward to the discussion. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening. Have a good week. Good night.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.